Anybody else in waiting? Nope. Okay. All right. So, good evening, everyone. It is six thirty for a school committee meeting October tenth. And so we're going to start off by actually going into executive session. I'll read a quick verbiage. And then we'll enter in. I'll reserve all the larger content for later when we return.
You have to roll call to open the meeting.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just not going to go the whole like meeting material, public, yeah, the public comments, all that other stuff. I'll wait till later. So, um, as chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present can hear me. School members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
She's here.
Yes.
Okay, Alexis Fishburne?
Yes.
Okay, and Hillary Griffiths is absent. Uh, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Yes.
Brian Haas?
Yes.
Um, and we had Heather Newman?
Yes.
Okay, we also have Detective McCann this evening?
Yes.
Okay, and some of our, um, guest Jerry Colbert?
Yes.
Chris LeBlanc?
Yep.
Phil Palumbo?
Yes.
Okay, and Brian, uh, do we have anybody else from staff? Um, Wayne, Liz, Keith, or Chuck or Charles that will be?
Um, several of them will join us at seven.
Okay, got it. Um, this, uh, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as remote meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Act of two thousand and twenty-three, signed into law by Governor Healy on March twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three. This act continues to exempt certain provisions of the opening law, uh, regarding remote meetings and public access until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five, sorry. Um, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at six thirty-two and oh, I need to do a roll call to do that. Mary?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Um, Alexis?
Yes.
And Natasha? Yes. All right. And now we will move to enter into executive session under purpose for MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A four, to discuss the deployment of security devices or strategies with respect to thereof, um, as it pertains to Green Meadow building. School committee will return to open session at seven o'clock. And now we will enter into executive session via roll call again. Mary Branley?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Alexis Fishburne? Sorry, I I made up your name just now, sorry. Um,
Okay, I've heard worse.
You're apparently, all right, I'll get it better later on in the meeting of prayers. Uh, and Natasha Rivera, yes. Um, so Colleen Fishbone?
Yes.
Oh, wait. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry, my dad called.
Okay, Alexis?
Yep.
Okay, Hillary?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
And Natasha? Yes. All right. So we are returning into open session. We've ended executive session. Thank you so much.
All right.
And?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you both. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay, thank you all for your patience as we had our executive session ran a wee over. Appreciate it. Um, so we are now returning from executive session into our open session. Um, it's seven fourteen. I'm going to go ahead and proceed back to the additional verbiage from the the script uh, for all the other stuff that I didn't do earlier. Let me go back. Okay, so this committee is convening via Zoom as posted on the district's website. While an option for a remote attendance, participation is being provided as a courtesy. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. You plan to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now and notify the chairs required by law. Um, okay, I do not see any hands raised. Um, just to confirm, do we have, um, the student reps? That's the only thing I wanted to we have Kaylee. Oh, oh, there we go. Harper, nice to see you. Can you hear us? Okay?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Um, so tonight's meeting materials and the agenda posted on the district's website under the folder two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five agendas under the school committee tab. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted, uh, agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. The public comments agenda item is devoted time for the school committee to hear from the public. As such, its structure primarily supports a unidirectional recording of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general ground rules for public comment, period. Any person wishing to speak and make a comment during the virtual meeting may do so by uh, signing up and speaking, signing up to speak publicly in advance up into the public comment agenda item, um, using the the link provided on the agenda. Please have your Zoom name match so that we be able to, uh, unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the chair. As time allows, the chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it is related to a topic that has not yet been brought up. Any person wishing to submit written comments to be read by the chair may may do so by emailing comments in advance up until the public comment agenda item to comments for SC meeting at maynard.k twelve dot ma dot U S. The subject line must state public comments. Please include your first and last name and your town to ensure your comments are read. Comments will be read for only three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they'll be suspended at the three-minute mark. To ensure all comments can be read in their entirety, it suggests that you keep them to approximately three hundred and fifty words. However, submitted comments longer than three hundred and fifty words will be included in the public record in their entirety. Anyone wishing to submit comments for the public record after the public comment agenda item has passed can do so by emailing comments for SC meeting at maynard.k twelve dot ma dot U S up into the end of the meeting specifically stating their desire to have these comments included. Um, ground rules before we go on, sorry, I'm like under attack with bug here. Uh, before we go on to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our meeting, um, to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude, I will ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time, if time allows. Please don't hold off speaking until your name is called. Remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who's speaking. Finally, each vote tonight um, will be taken via roll call since all members are not in person. And now, since we've already opened the meeting and done our executive session, now we will move on to public comments. Um, I didn't see any emails, Colleen, for public comments, but I just want to, I don't see any hands raised from our audience. Um, we didn't have anything, anyone submit a request, did we, on the link? Okay. All right, so we will move on from there, um, to urgent business. Uh, Superintendent Haas, any urgent business?
Uh, no urgent business today.
Great. Okay, and now we will move on to the student representative report and Harper, uh, the floor is yours.
Do I just read the entire report? I haven't done this before yet.
Yeah, so this is our, this is your time to share, yes, share your report that you've consolidated or report back. And then what you can expect is after the report, I'll go through and introduce each member to you and to see if anyone has any questions or comments about what you're reporting back. And and then we just have some dialogue there and feedback. And so sometimes there's information you might want to take note to bring back to the SAC. Um, sometimes there's just some elaboration on on different aspects that you've provided, okay?
All right.
Wonderful. And welcome to your first meeting with us.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so go ahead. Let us give us updates.
Okay, I will start with the highlights. So far, all of our fall sports teams are having a good season and senior night for field hockey and golf both went very well and field hockey is now thirteen and O. Which is pretty exciting. There was a safety assembly and our first Alistair, which all went very well. There weren't many concerns with that. I don't think any of that. And then we also had our first home football game, which there are some concerns which I will discuss in a second. We had a morning tailgate, which there was two, and the second one, there was a bigger audience, which I think was because we made pancakes and so many people wanted pancakes. And then the MHS open house for middle school students was a very big success with over fifty people in attendance. And then many of the SAC members were there as tour guides, which was good and helpful for a lot of students. And then also the senior privilege started, so that kind of helped with how big second lunch was. And now there's a lot of good issues that were ironed out by that. And then progress ports came out and grades and attendance are definitely higher than last year. So as a reward for that, the entire school gets a reward on Friday, the twenty-fifth, which to be determined what that is. Um, the WAVM reports and the telethon leadership positions are in place. Radio shows have started. And coverage of sports and town meetings have also started and are going well. Those are all the highlights I have so far. And then for the concerns, our first concern was the temperature. It was very cold in a lot of the classrooms due to pull pooling of too much air conditioning. So as a solution, SAC met up with our head Tony and he helped switch over to heat soon. And also he tried to iron up the kinks ahead of time, so rooms were not super hot and they weren't also super cold. And also teachers have started providing blankets and students also wear hoodies in order to stay warm. The phone policy, students are finding places where the original pilot wording doesn't actually cover some situations that we've had recently. So the principals have decided to review that with students and faculty. Um, one of the student concerns is that some teachers allow students to get packed up before the bell. Students think the phone should be allowed at that time and because they won't be disrupting class since class was already dismissed. And teachers feel that because it is still class time, phones should be away. And then with locker rooms, the admin was not aware that some students use locker rooms as a place to hang out between the end of the school day and practice. They would do things such as eat and do homework and hang out. And one of the issues with that was um, it was made so the locker rooms were locked at the end of the day, so students couldn't do that. And then they would unlock them when the coaches arrived. But with the girls on the soccer team, the coaches are both men and they can't get there, get there until four, so there's no supervision for them. So that is an issue. And then we came up with the idea that people could just hang out in the cafeteria instead because that way it's an open space and there is enough supervision around. And one of the big issues about coming across and locking the locker rooms was the way that it was handled when we were asked to leave the locker rooms was not in the best manner and it definitely upset some students. But as of right now, there are no necessary, like, necessary solutions that we have made, but the cafeteria after three fifteen and when open gym ends, we have to figure that out. Um, currently, people hang out in the cafeteria after three fifteen and locker rooms are available between two oh five and three fifteen when open gym is happening. And then at our football game, we had our first home game, which we won over Auburn. Administration was concerned about a few loud fans harassing and opposing the team on the sideline, the opposing team on the sideline, which is right in front of our temporary bleachers. Students had fun, but were concerned about the video sa- surveillance that needed to be taken of these poor fan behavior that was occurring involving hate speech and other things. Mr. Aria came to SAC to talk about possible solutions to the location of fans behind the visiting team. He didn't have any immediate solutions, but we will, he will return to SAC to discuss this further because many felt that the reason why these harmful speech was occurring was because it's so easy to do since we are right in behind the opposing team, but there's not a necessary solution for that yet. Um, Mr. Aria also came to discuss the bleacher project with SAC. The students are disappointed that they won't have a home side bleachers in the timeline that was planned. But Mr. Aria will keep students involved in any strategies moving forward if there are any created. And some upcoming events that we have is that there is a pep rally tomorrow at the end of school. And there's also a long weekend for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that is all I have in the report as of right now.
Awesome job. Thank you so much. You rocked it. Um, so now what I'll do is I'll go around to each school committee member and just um, see if they have any questions or, um, clarifications from what you've shared. Um, and what, before I I do that, I also wanted to let you know that once this part of the agenda is is done, um, you're always welcome to stay. You are a rep for, um, for the committee. We actually will be talking about the bleachers later on in the agenda, not too far on. So I would welcome the opportunity for you to kind of listen and maybe report back. Um, and if you have certain thoughts you'd want to share, I might, you know, look to you at some point, maybe to if we have any questions. So, um, but just, just for consideration moving forward as you join your, your, um, your, you're essentially our, our reference. You're always welcome to stay through the agenda. So just feel free to look over the agenda and see if there's things that, you know, are relevant to maybe student updates that you want to hear, or if you have questions and, um, you can hang out as long as you want. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome. All right. So, uh, Mary, I'll go to you. Any questions?
Yeah, welcome, Harper.
Hi.
Great to have you. Um, so just one question you may not be able to answer, so don't worry if you can't. But with the locker room situation, is that new this year? Is that a new policy or?
The policy of locking the locker rooms during out the day, throughout the day, from what I know, I think that is new. I just started playing a sport this year, so it hadn't really affected me in the past. But from what I know, the process of locking the locker rooms throughout the whole day and then waiting until, I think the original rule was until three fifteen when sports start. I think that is new.
Okay, all right. That'll be interested, um, Brian, I guess, in hearing some feedback on that. But no, everything else is great. You did a great, great, great job. Very, very thorough. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to having you.
And, um, just on that topic, I don't know, Liz, I know that you're here this evening as well. Do you have any, um, feedback on if that, it's Mary's question, if that's a new, this year, I know in like, two years ago, they started to secure more the afternoon. And I, um, and I thought that that was part of the locker room as well, but I don't, I I couldn't say for certain if that was part of that securing the afternoon. So you have students who are not unsupervised on campus.
Yes, so, um, we got, um, actually, Mr. Haas and I got guidance from our associations two years ago now that there had been some issues with liability in locker rooms that were unsupervised after school. So we decided together to put in more oversight, which is one of the reasons that we have the open gym monitor every day, just to make sure students are supervised in those spots where students sometimes get injured. Uh, namely, the gym, the weight room, and the locker rooms. But we did not realize that, um, this group of girls who wait for late coming coaches had really set up housekeeping. And not in any bad way, in a, in a very nice way. They were even cleaning the space to make it more pleasant. Um, but when uh, female staff started going through the locker rooms, they realized that, you know, the students were staying there after open gym and just waiting another forty-five minutes for their coaches.
It was a timing, pretty much a timing issue and, um, and it just may be more of a communication alignment when.
And until we had female staff working open gym, we never knew.
Okay, so, uh, it sounds like maybe just with the, with with Mike and just coordinating with staff, obviously, because I don't, I would hate to hear like it's just the students who are the girl students that are impacted by this, you know, disproportionately than than the guys.
Other teams go out at three fifteen.
Right.
So it's just one team. And so we have this compromise now, as Harper explained, that at three fifteen, they move, they finish their locker room time and they move to the calf for about half an hour, forty-five minutes. And that's only on practice days. And as the season winds down, there are fewer and fewer practice days. And more game days.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Good compromise, yeah.
Okay, Mary, anything else?
Nope, I am good.
Okay, Morrow?
I don't have anything. Great job, Harper. I'm happy to see your face.
Thank you.
Alexis? Nope, you're muted.
Well, that was a good thing it wasn't recorded.
Yeah.
Um, so, welcome, um, to your first school committee meeting. Thank you so much. You did a great job. Um, I do have a question about the football game and you might be able to answer it, you might not. But Principal York might be able to answer it. Um, the fans that used hate speech um, against the opposing team, uh, I'm curious what steps might have been taken, um, with those fans in particular, if they were parents or a part of community members and what was taken with them and also with the, um, the opposing team and whether or not there was communication with the coaches from Maynard staff, um, to discuss what happened. Um, and to find a solution because we certainly don't want that happening to any of our community members. Um, so we certainly don't want to act that way to others outside of our own community. So I'm just sort of curious what next steps might have happened after that.
Yeah, I'm sure Ms. York has a much better answer than me because she is involved in the situation. But from what I know, she scheduled some meetings, uh, to discuss it with them. She can chime in right after. But, yeah, it was definitely an issue because we don't want that to be the kind of what people think of when they come to Maynard to play football games. We always want to be seen as a good team to play and a good place to be. So I think that Ms. York definitely took some serious steps in order to make sure that this doesn't happen again, which she can go into detail what they were.
You got it perfectly, Harper. It was all just conversations. Um, we followed the procedures that we always follow as a first step. It was all private confidential conversations with, um, students, with their families. Mr. Aria did talk to the other team. And then there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, the proximity of our, you know, crazy Tigers, super fans to members of the opposing team as they're running off the field. It just creates a situation where, you know, people who are overexcited sometimes say things they don't mean and would never say when they weren't so excited and with all their friends. So we're working on it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And was, um, was the other, I guess, the other school receptive to, I know this has been kind of, it feels like a very more frequent occurrence, not necessarily Maynard doing, but at other schools, you know, uh, students in general, spectators, student spectators, um, almost feels like the norm in in some way, unfortunately, that we're seeing a lot more of this. And, um,
Yes, it luckily it wasn't, um, I don't know how to delicately, there was no, um, there was no race-based hate speech.
Okay.
And I'm very grateful for that.
Yeah.
It was more, um, gendered.
Okay.
And, um, yes, they were very receptive. I guess they have some female athletic trainers that interact with the boys on the sidelines and, um, comments were inappropriate, apologies were made. But I don't think anyone was, you know, too badly shocked or damaged um, as far as Mr. Aria was able to figure out. We would have, um, made more steps to repair if it had been worse. Luckily, I was standing right there, so it was instantly stopped.
Mary?
Yeah, no, I just had a question. Um, do we ever have those students like in a situation like this actually apologize to the people that they hurt? Um, because it seems like we're missing an opportunity if they aren't asked to actually, you know, face them or or even just, you know, apologize to them directly versus a third hand.
Yes. Okay, yes, that's a regular part of our practice is to have the actual students apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Hillary?
Um, well, thank you for joining us, Harper, and sharing. Um, I love the, specifically with the field hockey, that you guys actually had everybody, um, on the team go at the hand scored, go in to have the chance that one game. That was like really awesome how inclusive you all were.
Yeah.
Um, I love that. And then, um, I, my one quick question is what areas of the school are open between two and four? Like, what are the choices for where people can go? Um, there, so the cafeteria is open and there's also a good area near the athletic entrance. The gym, it closes, maybe open gym closes at three fifteen. I think that's what Ms. York said, yeah. But there's also a bunch of tables that a lot of people, like there's stacks of tables that are actually really like comfortable to sit in for doing homework. And then there's that carpeted area in front of the athletic entrance and the gym that people will sit in if they're waiting. And I think the cafeteria is a big part. It's really helpful if people have schoolwork to do, they can sit in there. But once the locker rooms are locked, it's mostly the cafeteria in that open area, I think.
Okay, where is homework club located?
It's in, I think it's in a paraprofessionals room.
Okay, it's in Ms. Gerondo's room. And that ends at three fifteen as well.
Okay. Um, and then?
Most of the school is open until three fifteen. And that's when, um, the academic wing sort of shuts down except for WAVM. And then it's mostly athletics. And in the fall, the athletics are, you know, three quarters of the time, they're all out of the building.
Yep. Thank you. Um, and then what has, what have the students been mostly thinking about as far as the bleachers and hearing that um, the new bleachers weren't approved? Um, you know, if people are talking about it, are they saying like they should really blah, 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 or what's like the overall commenting?
Um, from what I've heard, a lot of students are pretty sad that it's not happening because the, it's very crammed, the student section in the bleachers that we have at the moment and the whole concept of being on the opposite side of our team and of the band. It's a little bit kind of not as a fun experience. Obviously, it's always fun, but being behind our own team and being able to cheer them on from behind them would definitely be a lot more fun. And a lot of people, they've never experienced what it's like to be on those bleachers. So I think we're kind of just like, oh, I wish we could use those bleachers instead of these ones.
Thank you.
Um, I did I, did I get everybody? Morrow, I did, I did, right, I guess, okay. Um, Harper, um, two things. One, thank you for sharing. I know that this time of year is really difficult for weather adjusting because it's like, you know, what layers do I wear? Do I not? It looks like at least now we, it's being, it's a little bit cooler, it's steady cool, so we don't. So maybe keeping those hoodies close by are probably going to be like the norm now. Um, uh, the phone policy, I, this is interesting feedback. I know that we've spoken with Principal York extensively when, when the handbooks were, were going through and I, I know you weren't there, but I wanted to just share with you. Um, Principal York heavily advocated the student's position to be more self-regulating of, you know, trying to like, you know, give the ownership to the students like, hey, let's, you can reasonably or responsibly abide by, you know, the policy. The school committee at the time really wanted to come down a lot harsher with, um, access to phones not being in the classroom. So I would say just my thought as one member, and I see some heads shaking that, um, I think it is a reasonable approach to keep the phones in in the bags. If it has, if the policy is probably going to change, it's not going to be less uh, more lenient, I would say. So just want to make sure no one's getting, setting themselves up for sadness up with that. Um, the Fowler policy is a lot more restrictive. Um, but I think that I'm really excited that everyone's trying their best and 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 working and it's really hard. What I think I would worry about for teachers is, you know, I want the teachers to be teaching, you know, and and not have to worry about like, are they packed up? Is their phone out, you know, and checking minute per minute? That would be my first thought as a, as a, you know, school committee member coming to mind is the teachers probably don't want to be, you know, worrying about that kind of stuff as well. And it it can probably cause more disruption. So, um, so anyway, as your conversations evolve and and, um, Principal York, I know that you at some point are going to be reporting back to us with, you know, an update. It would be, um, maybe you can, we can hear how how things might evolve or, um, tweak as much as possible. So, okay. And I don't know if you had any other thoughts on that with the policy or if there was a lot?
Yeah, just in my personal opinion, I, this is probably not popular among my classmates, but I think allowing for that last little like three-minute place at the end of class, it's just, it can be confusing, I think, because the whole concept of just not being able to use your phone in class, you can use it in passing period and you can use it during lunch. That is very clear. And then if you open it up to, you can also use it for the last three minutes of school. It's just, it's gonna, I think it'll just end up being a fight between student and teacher and. It's just, it's gonna, I think it'll just end up being a fight between student and teacher. And it's maybe not necessarily necessary because they can just wait three more minutes.
And that is what we're trying to do too, is to really help the teachers. And you're right, because then it it sets, it goes down a slippery slope. Well, then it's five minutes. Well, then it's ten minutes. And then we're backtracking it, which is really like Natasha said, you know, this, you guys all, you know, put together the policy that worked for you. We were all thinking in terms of making it much more strange, um, strong, much stronger. So it will go the other way. It won't go back to being
Yeah, I know.
Maybe share that with with the students that they're fortunate right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. And I'm really excited that it's been, it sounds like there's just some small adjustments, but I think, you know, to Mary's point, it is worthwhile taking back that um, there probably would be less flexibility beyond what the current policy is, if anything. Um, you know, I think the school committee would be wholeheartedly, you know, behind the teachers and making sure that the teachers don't have to really monitor minutes of the end of the class and stuff of who has their phone out for how long. I think that's just.
Yeah.
I don't want the students and the teachers to feel like they're combating. Like, that's not the relationship we want you to have with your teachers over that. So if we have to be the meanies and be like, you know, the school committee don't want it then, so be it.
Yeah.
Um, but and then the other part too, and I guess we'll um it sounds like the the locker room situation, though, that is, it's resolved, if I'm understanding, like, there's the option has been, okay, great. So that's, there's nothing that needs to be figured out. It's it's.
It's all working out now.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you so much. Um, like I said, we do have on the agenda later on. We will be talking about bleachers and um, and I think it might be helpful for you to hang out if you're able to, or just sign on in a few minutes. You have to step away. But um, thank you so much for for joining us this evening.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Harper.
Thanks, Harper.
Okay, and uh now Superintendent Haas, the floor is yours.
Great, thanks, everybody. Um, good to be here, Harper. Great job. Glad to have you here. Uh, my report, you've all read it already. I'll sort of summarize some of the key parts. Green Meadow School Building Update, they've clearly started blasting this week, which is exciting on one way, and I think for some people maybe anticlimactic. It's not quite the big um booms that people had anticipated. It's a a solid shake. Um, and they send out emails. If you requested to be on that list, you can get notified 10 minutes before each blast. Um, the administration has done a great job of informing the community of when those will start, if and when they get canceled. They do occasionally just not, they're not able to do it the second time within a given day. They communicate that as well. Um, our meetings have continued, the building committee meetings. There's at least one, if not two, every week. Um, in addition to the nighttime meetings um with the building committee. So there's a lot of communication around the building project. Um, and their Colliers and MVG, as you saw earlier tonight, very thorough, um, very good communicators. Um, so that's been fabulous. I'm gonna hold on the two, the next two things in the report. I'm gonna have Principal York speak to the NIESC letter and AP um honors. And actually, and the middle, the Maynard High School Open House for Middle School Families that Harper mentioned that that was successful. She talked about that as well. Um, and one thing we thought of actually, where's Colleen? She's like hiding behind, not showing her face, but she did find something on a list that was a pretty interesting idea that other, some schools do, not all, but I think we should um consider it. I would bring it for your, you know, if you're, if the school committee is willing to provide a certificate of recognition to our student representatives, we can decide on exact wording, um, something to the effect of and recognition of your participation and contribution to the Maynard School Committee for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, da-da-da-da-da. Um, because I think it's exciting. It's great to have student voice at our meetings. And then it's kind of nice, I think, if I'm the recipient, I get this nice certificate that I get to put in my college application package or whatever. I get to frame it and put it on my wall. I don't know what I'm doing.
Love it. Not the idea.
But.
No, I I think that's, there's actually a lot of process and there's a board and there's, you know, training and stuff that goes into it. So I think I maybe falsely assumed that there was some type of certificate anyway. So if there isn't, absolutely, let's um.
We could raise the level to make it come from the superintendent and the school committee itself. So.
Yes, it is a lot, is a huge contribution to the community, actually. So thank you so much for for that.
I got a wave, by the way, and nobody else did. That was to me. Okay, just letting you all know. Uh, so Principal York, if you want to just update on the NIESC and the AP and either you or Harper on the Open House Middle School for Families, feel free.
Well, I'm thrilled to let you all know officially from me that the high school received three prestigious honors in the past couple of weeks. You've already heard that we were recognized by DESI. We are now a school of recognition, which is a statewide honor for the excellent performance of our students on last year's MCAS. Uh, we had been steadily getting scores that were pretty equal to the state. And this year's MCAS, the last year's freshmen and last year's sophomores really moved from needs improvement to proficient and from proficient to advanced in a way that the state recognized. We still have a lot of work to do, but it is wonderful. Everything they measure from um different subgroups doing better, attendance is up, graduation rate is improved. I really feel like we've rebounded from the pandemic and we're really back to school and getting it right now. So I'm hoping to report many more MCAS triumphs in the upcoming years. We received our.
No, it's our congratulations. That's it, sorry.
Thank you. We received our official letter of accreditation for the next 10 years from NIESC. So the good news of our report continues with our official accreditation. And our um NIESC follow-up committees started meeting in May of last year. I always like to have one follow-up meeting in the year of the visit. And then they will meet regularly. And there are three committees uh devoted to our three follow-up steps. One is to keep tightening up our vision of the graduate. Number two is to continue working on curriculum maps so that they stay living, breathing documents and that they're tied to the vision of the graduate. And the third is instruction for all, trying to make sure that we are narrowing those achievement gaps in every way we possibly can with great instruction in the classroom. And that, so that was honor number two. And now honor number three is uh second year in a row on College Board's AP Honor Roll. We got Silver Status this year because out of the class of twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four seniors, sixty-one percent took an AP. Out of those students, fifty-four percent of them got three and above on their examination. And twenty-five of those students, those graduating seniors, took five APs or more while in high school. Each one of those factors increases the likelihood that a student will go to college, persist in college, and graduate from college. And reduces the cost of college attendance at many schools which accept a three or higher for credit. So the students who took five or more, and some of them were AP scholars with distinction, who got three or higher on all the AP exams they took, if they matriculated to a college that takes those credits, may have had more than a full semester of credit to start them off. That will let them take extra electives, go deeper into their curriculum, or graduate early, all of which saves significant money.
Wow.
So these are pretty amazing honors. We're definitely moving in the right direction. But we still have a lot of work to do. As you know, my work this year is all about instruction in the classroom and really trying to narrow those achievement gaps so that everyone is included when we celebrate next year.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Um, I had a couple of questions and I'll go around to the school committee um as well after. Um, so the AP, I know there's been some offline conversations about like our approach with AP classes and and whatnot. Do we envision there will be something that we would be able to clarify in in the handbook for the high school as far as the opportunities of when um students can take AP classes um or when, so we can make sure it's more equitably known um within the community, if it's more ninth grade, tenth grade, or when those recommended classes are starting?
Well, we do have it very clear in the program of studies right now. But um, I think maybe you're referring to an exception to that that was asked for.
Yeah, I'm just referring to there's like differences and I think it's just alignment and like in the handbook and the the program of studies, I think, in some areas. So um, if we are able to offer a ninth grade AP um and it, you know, potentially, I don't know what that looked like or if that is recommended. It would be great to hear about um what that looks like, because some schools do and some schools don't. Um, but again, I don't know the resources involved in that. So it'd be something that I think come down to a lot of other factors as well.
Um, something I'm glad to um discuss in depth. It, you know, with my team and with leadership. And perhaps we could prepare a report about the future of AP at a future meeting. Whether we're foreseeing changes, you know, I think that the state is really encouraging us to um make more dual enrollment.
Yes, that was my other question. I was, I was going to ask about that as well, is the um aside from AP as well. I know that there are a lot of high schools that have partnerships with community colleges, um Marlboro and whatnot. They have these like college pathways that they can do and they, you can get credits back. So um as you're, you're, you're meeting with the leadership team, um, I would love to hear something about, you know, maybe that opportunity. In particular, I'm thinking about students that um maybe are looking, that don't, you know, fit the four-year college, you know, mold. Um, I, from hearing from students who go look at like Assabett, in particular, the VOTAC School, the um opportunity is very appealing for them to work towards some type of, you know, license or, you know, accreditation that they might be able to get into the job market um in a, in a way. And I know we'll never meet that standard, but if we, you know, can somehow expand the pathways in some way, that might make, you know, staying in Maynard a little bit more appealing um so that we are able to meet a little bit more of those less um traditional college-bound, four-year college-bound students. Um.
I I couldn't have said it better myself. And then the question becomes, how do we do what's best for most when we can't do everything in such a small school?
Yeah, and 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 that is also, yes, that is also the challenge is how do we, how do we meet the needs of of most and provide the opportunities? Um. And also be cognizant of like school retention, student retention as well.
We do have a meeting planned for the Pathways Coordinators, uh Jean LaBelle, who's our school-to-career coordinator and myself with Middlesex Community College.
Oh, wonderful.
In mid-November. And the discussion will be about students in the pathways earning college credit. Which, as you probably know, our pathways grants pay for.
Yeah.
So it would not be at any cost to the families.
That, that would be fantastic to hear more about.
We have to figure out some logistics before I make any announcements.
So please keep us updated. That sounds very exciting work. Um.
Thank you.
And yeah, no, and also just congratulations to you and the team and everybody just for all the um um things to celebrate that you've outlined. I mean, it's.
We just set it all up. It's the students who do the work and achieve this greatness for us.
Thank you. Um, Mary, I know that you had some.
Yeah, no, I just um, yeah, congratulations on all these great awards and don't undersell yourself or the teachers, because it it takes the the entire group in order to to make this work. Um, and again, how do we share all of these incredible um, you know, um accolades with the general public is I, we just don't seem to be able to do that enough. So any thoughts that anybody's got? I know that we've got an Instagram, you know, we've got, I'm just wondering if the students could put it out there on Instagram. It seems to be more prevalent than like Facebook or that, but just uh we don't have the beacon anymore. I know we've got that Maynard Advantage, which we can take advantage of, but it doesn't have a huge following yet. Um, but any thoughts on, and maybe this is, maybe it's a challenge to the students to say, help us get the word out to, you know, to the world of all the great things that are going on.
Yeah, I mean, that could be a great opportunity. I agree, Mary. You know, it's, maybe it's like a a video or promo like, hey, this is, you know, and because a lot of people subscribe to WAVM and and you get those alerts and, you know, people to watch the meetings. So um, yeah, maybe.
You know, we could even put it, I'm I'm thinking now, um, the um, it's not a huge po- general population, but our our February meeting that we have with all the boards, the town boards, we could have like a short, you know, if the kids put together a a short video, um, you know, just any opportunity that we've got, uh even Springtown, wouldn't it be great to have it at Springtown Meeting, just to have a little video at the beginning? Um, so but we really do, we need to start really thinking about how to um, how to tell everybody how terrific things, things are. Um, so that was one. And the um, going back to the NIESC, so when is our next time meeting with them to to talk about the three areas of improvement? Do we have a time?
We submit reports now.
Okay.
For the next nine years.
Okay.
Until our next site visit.
Okay.
Although um the steering committee and I will occasionally be invited to conferences to check in.
Perfect.
So it's somewhat the honor system with with copious report writing.
Okay, all right, terrific. And then um lastly, we have had various times where we have collaborated with um community schools. So it it just, we just need to make it stick. You know, we did it with LaSalle at one point. We did it, I think, I thought we did it with Middlesex, but we just need to find a way to really make that stick, because it has been tried in the past. So good, good challenge for you. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mary, there are, like, actually, I was looking at um ye- yesterday, um there's some community college who actually have links to, like, again, they, like Gardner or like a marble, like to the schools themselves. So it's, it's really great if we could kind of formalize something along those lines. But I do agree, it was its resources and and time and how do we figure out, you know, how do we have opportunities for for most um with what we have? So thank you. Um, Alexis?
I don't have any questions.
Morrow?
Good. I just wanted to say thanks and congratulations on all the accolades. This is really fantastic. And I was gonna basically bring up the same thing as Mary about marketing these things. I think that, you know, having um, you know, the kids, the kids really do a great job at sending stuff out on Instagram. Um, so I think that if we could get some of those those kids to do the same thing for for this kind of stuff. I mean, there's tons and tons of stuff about, you know, soccer and football and those types of things. Like, we, we should be able to get them to also be super excited about, you know, marketing their school for this type of stuff. Um, I think definitely the Maynard Advantage, there are a number of other um uh individuals in town that have their own other little kind of news type of um articles that they put out. Um, I think that we could, you know, really kind of try and see if we can get them on board. Um, you know, because a lot of people do read those. Um, and then there are a number of community members that also just post things about um meetings and things that are happening in town. And we could, if if we just had somebody that would then just send those people um on Facebook or Instagram to be able to then put that out to the, to the community, I think that that would really help too. But great job. Thank you.
Hillary?
Um, I just love this. This was so mu- so much exciting news. I really liked the bulleted list and the email um and the letter from the S, because I feel like that really touches on all the things that make Maynard special. And I love that half of the list is about um the environment and the culture and being inclusive and the social emotional side. And um, I feel like it's a great represented, representation of what is special. Um, and along the lines of. Um and along the lines of the advertising the school, I wonder if um. Like, we could even do a press release to the Boston Globe where they do those different features on schools when they do their rankings and stuff. Um and maybe spin it like, you know, you guys said that Maynard was. One of the best schools for paying for your buck, like, do you want to learn more about Maynard? And um you never know what they'll pick up on a slower news day. Um but it's just an idea.
Um, right, I think that is it. For and Brian, I I did want to circle back to other parts of your um superintendent report, just to. About the blasting um a little bit, if that's okay, uh before we move on. So um I had some questions about. Do we, or these are questions that I got from different people in the community, but I wanted to clarify. So we used to have, and I believe we still have at the Green Meadow. Um air purifiers, is that?
That's correct. We have them in every room and they change the filters.
Okay, so those are still um, just so I can make sure I.
Operational.
They're still being in used um all the time as of now. And and the filters that are that were being used before, I know we had, they were um. They're the same type of filters that they were like the increased, I forget the the type that were being used. Um.
So I think you're talking about the filters like Merv eleven, Merv thirteen for the HVAC systems at the other buildings.
Oh, that's right, that's different, that's.
These are smaller units, they're.
Yeah, okay.
But we do have those running and we do change the filters as needed.
Okay.
Tony's definitely on top of that.
Okay, the questions that I had, which I'll I'll forward to you in an email, but I just wanted to share just. From what what I um had received differently was about um. Is there a testing for uh the air quality that's happening? Um intermittently at some point in the classrooms or in the building. Uh because I guess there have been parents maybe who have seen um particles that are just kind of kind of getting into the building. I don't know. I haven't seen that, but that is feedback that was shared, so um.
I can talk to Phil about that. I mean, I haven't seen that when I've walked around.
Right, and I don't know if it's been in like when exactly it's happened, but um that is some questions that um. Some, maybe we want to have some answers for, just to um is about. Um air quality test in in the building, if there's, you know, is there any type of monitoring? But there that for that. And then also um the kids, they go outside for for recess. Um how is the space outside where they're at? Is there air quality?
Changed. Oh, do you mean in terms of dust?
Yes, yes, exactly. With the the particles, is there any type of? Air quality tests in the outdoor space that might be, I I don't know about this, but this is just some questions for people are. Wondering that just the wind might, you know, take it a particular day, it's fall. Um and then maybe if there's things that get on their clothes and they bring it inside, you know, all the things to consider, so I'll.
I haven't heard about that yet.
I um I haven't seen it, but this is, this is, I think, some just of questions that we, you know, might need to flesh out to make sure that everyone's understanding. The protocols that are in place. Um.
Yeah, if they want to email us, that would be great. We certainly can answer those questions.
I will forward you a couple of eve questions that I received and then maybe if you can include that in your um next time, the superintendent report. Um that might be helpful, or however you feel like the best way to communicate that, if it's. Um maybe Karen as well, if there's some, I don't know if there's some FAQs that are going out to the Green Meadow families in particular. Um but just to be helpful, so that they they understand that, like, obviously, there's there's air quality test, this is what's happening. Or no, or whatever that might be. Um. That was it that I had for, other than that, I think everyone did a great job managing. I think it was kind of like a. I think some kids were excited when they heard the, you know.
Absolutely.
Uh so I I think it's just more parent worry, obviously. Um and and I think. We're we're in good hands, though, so thank you so much.
Absolutely.
But, okay, anybody else have any questions for Brian on and the other aspects of the superintendent report?
Just uh more for Elizabeth. Unfortunately, half her left. I would have loved to have heard her response about the open house, but I think she left. Maybe if Elizabeth could maybe give us a quick.
Oh, it was really fun. It's all um. You know, the stations are all set up for the eighth graders to try activities at different departments and. The um then they hear the jazz band play, they talk to a panel of students. And then we all sit down for dinner together and really start to get to know each other. It's one of my favorite events of the year. Right after Maynard Fest, which I think is my favorite.
Great.
So grateful that it's now that it's happening in October. It's um, yeah. Really good, good time of the year. In the past, we've done it much too late, so the fact that we've um, you know, put it earlier in the school year is terrific. So thank you.
And really, all credit goes to, I mean, a ton of helpers, but Ms. Dr. Of. Has pushed and worked so hard to create these events for our eighth graders.
That's a, that's.
Really, it's very difficult to get up and running in a school year and then start to have promotional events right away. But she manages it somehow.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, you know, actually, Mary, you reminded me on along those lines, so I just wanted to share some feedback that I've heard from kids about um. Visiting Assabette. So um I know that they, the eighth graders. This week also had the chance to go visit Assabette. And um. The feedback that I've heard from a couple of kids is um and of course, in eighth grade. Um language, but is um. It's, they have free busing home after sports, sports are free. It is cool because they do more hands-on projects. So I just took a couple of notes from things that I've heard from different kids that had, you know, had the opportunity to go. They also, you know, did go to the eighth grade, you know, uh one. And and I say this um in the sense that. There's such an inequity, I feel that we are Maynard are paying for that. We can't even have. Um free buses for our own district, let alone busing an afternoon bus that goes to bring people home. Um or free sports. So um. You know, I think we're, as we talk about, you know, budgeting and planning, um. I think this is something that we need to really, as a school committee and and Brian as well, figure out how do we maybe advocate in some way. To, I don't know if it's with um Jamie and Kate, our representatives. But along with what's later on on the agenda about AMSA enrollment. Um expanding and, you know, coupled with the fact that now it looks like we're not. As a town deciding to really invest much more in our athletic program or alumni field. Um it really worry about student retention as a whole, because um these are all the things that. People take into consideration, you know, cost, um you know, value into different things when they think of. Where their kids are going. So I just wanted to share feedback because that was the other aspect. Um that, you know, kids are able to go to Assabent, this is what they're told when they're there, like, hey. You know, you can come, you can play any sports, you don't have to try out. You can, you know, it just, you know, they're really laying on the marketing, very thick and to the kids. And um and so how do we, how do we counter that in in those particular ways? I don't, I don't know what we can do, but that is just. What I struggle with. Hillary?
Yeah, I was thinking too, um after the town meeting in the spring, when Assabette asked for. I don't remember what it was called, but basically a savings account for capital improvement things. Um. A lot of people in town have asked me about why the school committee didn't vote for it. And when I explained about how there's this like. Discrepancy between how their funding works and how our funding works and how when they need something, they ask for it, they get it. And we need it, we ask for it, we don't get it, and then how that plays out. Um a lot of people in the town that were saying to me, like, why doesn't anybody know this? And um so I wonder if that's something we need to share just with the community as a whole. So when they're, when they. Um are comparing, they know that it's the town funding and the difference in that that structure and everything, because if people are just thinking. You know, we're not choosing to do the things that it Assabett's choosing to do and they, it might help for them to understand that. We don't get to choose how much money we get the way Assabett does.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to take up too much time on this issue. I just was thinking more, and I agree, there's needs to be a deeper conversation. It might be more for the quad board as well. Um because, you know, there's only so much we can do as we're not, you know, there's a separate school committee member who liaisons from Maynard to Assabette. Um but it was just more in the context that we put all this work and and Liz and team. You know, to really promote Maynard and then the things that we are. The are being compared to are things that are out of our control, that we can't change, um because we can't afford to, but apparently we're paying for it elsewhere. To happen, um which feels a little like, I don't know how you even solve for that. So. Anyway, just something that I think we need to brainstorm on a little bit more um as well.
Yeah, it's it's definitely bigger than us. We definitely have to bring in Kate and Jamie on this, because it's. The inequity is so, it's becoming so dramatic, you know, between AMSA, as we're talking about, you know, wanting to add students and. The money that comes out and nothing against these different, you know, entities. So I mean, we we collaborate with Assabette, it's just. It's inequitable, it is absolutely inequitable, and we're, our kids that stay here are the ones that um that suffer for it, so we need to. You know, get the big guns going, because it's not working even with our quad board, needs to be bigger conversations.
Yeah, I and and Assabette is must so lucky that they're getting their athletic director as well this year too, on top of that.
The trainer, yeah.
Yeah, the trainer, yes, must be nice. Um. So, all right, I'll I'll keep my better thoughts. From myself for now, but I think uh Brian, is there anything else in your superintendent report? I think we touched on everything.
I think we covered it.
Okay, so um the alumni bleacher project update. Um everyone we know, bleacher didn't pass, so I think what um. We, as a school committee, need to really discuss is um the. What everyone's feeling the priority is, I I I think it would be demoing what we have now. And um I just wanted to make sure we have alignment, um so we can give, you know, Brian direction. Um clearly from everybody on, you know, what, I mean, this is. Um absent funding, so this is just like, we don't have any funding, but what ideally, and we'll have our our quad board meeting as well, so I I. I don't think this is something that we, as a school, a school department would be assuming that we would need to fund. I mean, it was a town vote not to fund the project. Um which the demo was part of, so I think it's a town decision to figure out how do we then fund the aspects to. Um to demo what we have. So just real quick, oh yeah, sorry, Mary.
Yeah, no, just a quick question. Aren't we better off leaving them up because they're fenced in now, so they're safe? And don't we, won't we lose the opportunity of having WAVM? Um use the press box if we demo or it'll be additional cost, because then we have to create um a mobile press box. I guess that's the kind of conversation we need to have.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I like, I I want to make sure. Yeah, um so. Um my thought as one person is I think that they are more of a risk, even though they're fenced in. I think there's, they're a liability. Um, you know, people have gotten hurt on them and I think the my, I wanted to tear them down last year, you know, and um because I think. Um they're reminiscent, they're just a reminder of inaction. Um and that we're not able to really do much, but I would have more peace of mind knowing that they, at least that that. The safety aspect is, you know, is not, we're not controlling that. We can't control the bleachers being created. But we can control mitigating the risk of the safety and and technically, I don't feel comfortable even with our staff going up to the press box. Um and at that point as well, but I don't know how everyone else feels. I don't know, Mauro, I'll kind of go around. Ma- oh, Brian, sorry, I see you have your your hand raised. I don't know what you're.
Yeah, I can just, I have a meeting set up with Mike Basile and Mike Arian next week to talk about options if they. Um aren't accessible, just so we can have a little more information, but.
Right, so so maybe the cost of demoing, which I think we sort of know, and the cost of creating a mobile. Press box so that it doesn't hurt that. Maybe those, maybe those dollar amounts are already available, but just so we can have that conversation.
Yeah, I think there's, that's, well, I want to make sure first. If everyone is in agreement that, you know, aside from the WAVM consideration, just the the the. Do, does everyone feel that the the bleachers should be demoed uh as a priority? Um assuming we can secure funding someplace. Um or does anyone feel that we should leave it? Um Mauro, I don't know what your thoughts were.
Um I think it depends on on, you know, what what happens with WAVM uh press box. Um. I think, you know, depending on if we can get a, you know, uh some sort of rental option. Um and how much that is and what that means for the electricity, um all of that stuff. Um, you know, maybe we bring in the the um inspector and see, you know. Is is it okay for them to be using to go up?
No, we already did that. We already asked, we already asked if they can get like a a. Like um an exception to just for access to, that was.
Okay, and so he says no.
Yes, he previously said, so right now we're at our own.
Okay, okay.
By by doing that. Yeah, we did ask that before.
All right, so so then. Is there a way that we can have? If we do tear them down, the the bleachers and leave the press box, is there a way that we can create access? To the press box, or is it attached? And so we can't.
It's, it was all coming down. Yeah, it'll it'll be like an all or nothing, I think, Brian, and I I think that's how we've talked about it before. It's just figuring out where we reroute electrical stuff, because they have electrical that goes into the press box, right? And so without a press box, we'll need. Figure that part out, I think, as well. Um. Like, how to, I, anyway, I just want to, I think that's where I've heard the conversations, but it sounds like more to come when he meets, but.
Yeah, so I think, and you know, depending on the answers about that. Will depend on um, you know, kind of where I, where I'm at. I I would love for them to be able to still have that option. To use the press box. Um but if it's not, not. If they're not able to, then, you know, yes, we should tear it down. Um.
So I guess, just to clarify, are you thinking that there would be a scenario? That you would want to keep them up if that means the press box? Is, because I think the press box would be demoed. Um so there would be no press box. But I don't know about the other, like, alternative options for WS, would be no press box if we demo. Um. So what is that, like, with that in mind? Like, it could maybe be rental, I'm not sure, but just the bleachers themselves, demoing them.
Right, yeah, no, I understand that. Um. Yeah, I I guess I'm just. Kind of torn, because I, you know, I'd like them to to still be able to have that. Um.
So if I can, so Chris Huntress had said that they have had. Projects before where they did have a mobile, granted, it was only supposed to be interim, but they did have. Uh a mobile press box, or I forget how how he worded it. Is that not an option if we take down? What we've got?
Um, I think we probably need, that'd be a funding conversation.
So I guess that's.
Yeah.
Is is how much is it going to cost?
Right.
You know the thing that they use at the softball games? It's like the big platform up in the air. Like, is that a mobile press box, or is that something different?
That's a parent's um device, it's a camera that records that goes like on the field, you mean, or no?
No, it's like students are up on it at the end of the field, like they they set it up and. Climb up it and sit on there during the softball games to record. Um.
I have no idea, I've never seen that before.
Okay, I sort of figured that was like a mobile press box and that's what they would use if we tore down the bleachers.
I've seen them, they use like a platform before, if that's what you're.
Yeah, it's like a big platform that's up high.
Yeah, I think that's a rental. Um like, we don't have. That's not what we would have, it'd be an extra cost, like an extra, like pricing that out, so maybe.
Already have it for softball and other sports.
I don't think we have anything like that. I'm not sure that I've, I don't know, maybe Mike, Mike can clarify what we have, but I don't know of anything that we. Seen with that.
I think I kind of feel the opposite of Mauro in that I I don't particularly feel strongly about taking the bleachers down right now. Um if they're protective. Um, if they're protective, people are. Like if people aren't going to get hurt because they're fenced off, but I don't like people going up there to use the press box if the, if it's not safe. Um. So I sort of feel the opposite where I don't really care about taking down the bleachers right now because I think to some extent, let people see what they look like. Um, but I don't want people at at risk by climbing up there for W A V M or for the games.
But as long as they're erected, they would potentially be used first for that. So I think that would be a.
Why, why would they, like, why can't we, like, who, how are they getting up there right now if there's a fence?
Because they have, they have access, like limited staff have access to it.
Right, we have, we have a door, like we intentionally have a gate on the fence so that W A V M can access it for their purposes only. Nobody else can go in or out, so it's.
But that's what I'm saying, like we could stop that if it's not safe, you know?
Yes.
Right, I think that's what, what he was going to mean, because his equipment, like there's the equipment and considerations with all of that, like not using the. The press box, uh, that would need to be figured out.
I get that, I just, I, my, I have um, more significant concern with people using the press box currently. Than I do with bleachers that are fenced off and not being used.
Okay.
Alexis?
Yeah, I suppose we say it sounds like we're more in for two.
Alexis, what are your thoughts?
I'm sort of torn. Um, you know, I sort of want the bleachers gone, um, because they're an eyesore and. I want people to see, guess what, you know, this is what it looks like without anything. This is what the world's going to be now. Um.
And there's no money to tear them down.
Yeah. Right.
Right, this is what we would be asking for, that the quad board, like a conversation piece, but I, but before we go in and ask. I want to make sure that we are of the same position that we want to pursue that. As a a a need that we, we do that, we can't obviously do it ourselves. This is where we need some alignment as a, as a board. That, um. You know, bleachers come down, we don't need to rent the fence anymore, we don't need to, um, we won't have a press box. We might be able to somewhere, I don't know, I think any of those ad hoc alternatives for W A V M of platform or whatever would have to be a secondary. Consideration. Um, we probably have to put an R F P out for demoing because I'm guessing it could be fifty plus, fifty plus thousand dollars. So, um, but before we go through all that, we need to make sure we, that's what we want to pursue because it's not going to, it's. It'll take time and bidding for that. Um, and I. Uh, I'll let you finish, sorry Alexis, I didn't want to cut you off, but I just wanted to clarify, um.
I mean, my concern is we've told everybody that the bleachers and that entire area. That structure is completely unsafe and nobody should be on it, whether they're in the bleachers or the press box. And if that's what we've told people, that it is completely unsafe. I'm not comfortable sending students and staff into a space where we've told the town, nobody should be. Um, and so from that perspective. And I know we'd have to come up with solutions for games and for W A V M, but I feel as though. If that's what we're telling everybody, then we can't be doing it ourselves.
Right.
You know, it's not like monkey see, monkey not do. We can't, we can't be allowing that to happen. Um.
But if that's the.
And it's all or nothing. I think at this point, it's all or nothing.
If that's the only access to like, turning on the lights or, you know, all that kind of stuff. Somebody has to go up there.
No, that's where they would have to make like electrical, they would have to use the electrical. That be part of the demo process is figuring like, you know, rerouting, um, whatever is coming through there. Um, so if it's access to plug in equipment or whatever, you know, that's part of that electrician would have to be, that's why we'd have R F P would come out. They come out, look at the, this is what you need.
I definitely think we should stop paying for rented bleachers.
Right.
Because if the town doesn't want to pay for bleachers, let's not pay for bleachers. I do, I care, I would prefer to pay for an alternative for W A V M and the students programming than I care about paying for community members to sit in bleachers that they don't want to pay for.
Well, with you, yeah, I think also that gives a false perception that those are okay and they're not. Like they're not actually an option, so it is at this point, they were only meant to be interim until the project started. But now that we know that that's not happening, um, so does it sound like, I just want to make sure of the takeaways I'm hearing the majority of folks, um. That are access to the W A V M, no one's really comfortable with that, that we, the bleachers are not accessed, so we, we want to, Brian. Um, kind of unwind sunset that process of utilizing the the press box up there. Um, and so work with Mike, I guess, to figure out how to that part. And then once that is solved for, that means nobody would be using it, are we then comfortable? Then saying, let's, you know, proceed with demoing, um, at that point. Um, and then while separately, I guess, explore, and then also no rental, so we, are we saying like no rental after football season?
What's our contract for the rentals? Like when have you rented them through?
I think it's just the season, right, Brian? Is it like so after?
I can confirm with Mike, it's either season by season. Um, yeah, we'll go through, think the fall season, which takes us through the Thanksgiving game.
Yeah, I think whenever the the contract is up, we're done.
Okay, so then, Brian, just to take away, it sounds like, you know, whatever we've contractually obligated to pay for the bleachers, we would not want to extend that. Um, so if it's just this season, um, then, um. No bleacher rental after this season, which would mean no fence rental as well. Um, and maybe we can think about, um, I think the money.
Well, wait a minute, the fence and the bleachers are two separate things because the fence. You don't want to take the fence down yet because that's what surrounds the bleachers.
Well, I mean, I mean, after the demo, sorry, after the, after the demo, like, yeah, yeah, so there's demo in between, I'm sorry.
I'll meet with Mike and Mike.
Okay.
And then I'll be able to provide more answers to this discussion. Lots of good questions. I just don't happen to know all the answers about.
Yeah, no, 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 I just, that's why I wanted to.
Alternatives for the press box.
Absolutely.
And rentals.
Yep.
And I, I think the, the other piece is that, and it came up at at town meeting the other night, is that. We are most likely going to be looking for an operating override, and so for us to be paying for bleacher or for playing, paying for the. That, you know, the bleachers and, um, you know, and all of that, we we can't afford it, we just can't afford it anymore, so. Um, we need to focus on what's most important, so, yeah.
I feel like whatever we have to pay to rent an alternative to the press box. Can be included in the operational override and stressed to the residents. You didn't want to pay for bleachers, so now we're paying for this, because it's part of the programming.
We could, yeah, we can figure all that out and, um, and and there's also, just to clarify as well, because I've gotten a lot of questions about. The bleacher project, about fundraising and what, you know, why we not fundraise and and what, so just for general public awareness. Um, Maynard Public Schools is not a five O three C, so directly we cannot do fundraising, the school committee cannot do fundraising, however. If any member of the public would love to step forward and create um, a five O three C. That wants to begin fundraising for um, collecting, I don't think you're going to get any one of the school committee, the school department to object to that type of initiative. Um, I know that there's boosters that are out there and there's other clubs, but um, they they have their own chart of what they can collect for. Um, what they've claimed and, um, I have heard just, um. Anecdotally, that none are really willing to take on that larger, you know, changing their 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 charter. Uh, for their program to to this, so I just wanted to clarify that. However, separately, um, Brian and Wayne, um, and Wayne and Mikearia have. Explored grant opportunities as much as we were able to, the CPC, that was a huge effort to try to get grant opportunity from there. That did not come through. Um, there was a grant opportunity from, um. Oh, that Verizon, oh, T-Mobile about Friday Night Lights, there was work that was put into submitting the application there. Um, our high school was not chosen, there was an application for B J's. That was giving out some small in, um, projects for schools, we did not get chosen for that. There was, um, there, I have looked into the NFL, they do uh, grants as well for um, school projects. Um, there are certain target communities that you need to be part of. And Maynard isn't, isn't one of those target communities that is eligible, um, for the New England Patriots. So they have different teams, they have different target communities within there and part of the New England Patriots would be. Um, is, we we're not part of their, that target group, it's more of the urban communities that would be eligible. For projects that they can do, so if anybody else is aware of anything else, um, please, forward over, we've tried, but we're not grant writers. And, but we have still tried to find funding opportunities to um, supplement what we can do. Um, and thinking about the ble- bleacher rental, Brian, I know that we had. Um, at the annual town meeting in the spring, um, funds that were dedicated, I think it was only to rentals. So we might need to, maybe at the next spring town meeting, uh, maybe amend the wording, so if it's for like. W A V M rentals or whatever, whatever not using on rental bleacher rentals, maybe we expand it for, you know, whatever need, we reassess what that need might be, whatever the balance is. For that, um, to consider. And, um, another idea just for the school committee that I had thought of. Um, is, you know, we could potentially explore, um, creating, um, a stabilization or a revolving account. Specifically for the project and, you know, maybe we ask that free cash every town meeting gets put a little bit in there, you know, and that maybe. You know, that could be, you know, I don't know, after a year or whatever, that can some amount offset whatever we need to bond for. So I mean, like, there's, you know, it's, we need to need progress, um, and that's kind of some things that I've been thinking about, but I don't know how. Um, how that all translates. First, I want to make sure we're aligned with what we want to prioritize at this point, so it sounds like. Um, no access to the press box and figuring that part out and then demoing. Um, that and we can talk at the quad board about what that funding need would be to do that. Anybody else have any thoughts or? Questions on that? No, alrighty. Wonderful. Now, moving on, thank you, everybody. Um, also, just. Everybody, thank you for all the hard work. I know this was a lot of years of discussions and. Um, and Brian, you and the team and Wayne and everybody.
And if I, if I can, I probably get hit by eggs tomorrow, but uh, there's an awful lot of Monday, Monday morning quarterbacks out there saying, you know. We should have done this, we should have done that. It's like, where were you when we were, you know, going through this process? It's very easy after the fact, so.
Yeah.
Just, uh, very, very discouraging, but anyway.
I think some of those folks would be great candidates for creating a fundraising committee and fixing the problem themselves.
They would.
Yeah, Colleen?
Just a time check for thirty-five minutes over.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right now, so now we're moving on to the, um, next item on the agenda is the F Y twenty-five budget. Um, the only thing we really need to do here is really just allocate that seventy-six thousand that. Um, was was, um, additional money that was funded to Maynard Education and, um. And move it to the cost center four thousand, which relates to the facilities, plant facilities and maintenance. Um, Wayne, I just want to confirm, I see that you're on, I just want to confirm that you are still good with that, that sounds like the best approach still. You have no questions, concerns regarding that?
Yes, if they think that it should go to our operate, excuse me, our, our operating budget as opposed to. Uh, in the past, they would keep it at at their level and it is kind of like a capital grant, if you will, that we tap into. Uh, if they don't want to do that, then.
Yeah, this.
Quite, you know, um, they usually, once the operating budget is set, there's not any addition, but it can be done.
I think this is a little bit. Different because it it went into our general fund and I I I know that when we talked about it in our budget subcommittee meeting with. Um, Jeff, we had originally thought maybe it can go into our. When our facilities revolve, but they said it couldn't, it would just go into the general operating, so then we said, okay. In that case, we'll put it into the cost center, so they got reassurances that it would be spent on, you know, maintenance expenses and whatnot. So that, um, which is, I think, what the. Select board was wanting to make sure it didn't get, um.
I think they're mixing apples and oranges. They're trying to avoid what happened. Uh, before with, uh, the money that they gave us, we put in the circuit breaker and you had to move it back out. What I'm saying is they keep it at their level, it's just like, uh, they approve some type of capital. Like all the other capital money they've given us, they keep at their level and I put on the appropriate account number. So that it gets, the money gets charged to that account as opposed to trying to add it to the operating budget.
It's already been, it's already been approved that way, though, at town meeting.
Well.
It wa- it went to Maynard Education, like it wasn't like a, like cat, free cash, right? That would be kind of like it gets its own line. This was just added to the Maynard Education operating. Um. I think that was a challenge, is how do we? Yeah.
I think what I suggested would have been a cleaner solution, uh, than trying to add it to operating budget, but it's, it's sounding like it's already done, they've already voted it to. The, uh, the school's operating budget, then it's a done deal.
Yeah, they did, they added it to the original allocation, so it was a total, hold on, let me look at the number that they added, sorry.
No, while you're doing that, isn't, aren't we better off having it as part of the operating budget because then it becomes part of our base for next year for the two and a half percent increase?
Well, I don't think they want that, so I'm sure they'll remind us that that amount is.
That was a given, that if it goes into that, then.
No, I think that was the worry, is that it it is going to come in as general operating and that we shouldn't assume to build that in in subsequent years. But the reassurance is.
They did it at the town meeting, then isn't it on them?
There's no other way to give us them, we we needed seventy-six thousand dollars and it was only coming, it wasn't coming through, through free cash. This is the only way for us to get the money that we need to. Towards that second HVAC, and so this, this was how, I guess, a compromise is, okay. They will, they supported the effort as long as they, we, they knew we weren't going to be, you know, using it towards other operating expenses. Um, or counting on it in subsequent years, and so this is, I guess. I don't know if I'm representing it wrong, but this is kind of the way that we, we got the support. To Greg's recommendation and he was able to have the select board sign off on it. Um, so I, again, this is, this is all I'm just relaying the messenger, so at this point. I look at it as just money that we've gotten, just like we normally do with our budget, it goes in our operating and we just allocate it and, um. Into the budget for the cost line, however, we'll figure out next year, we got a lot of work on that, that front anyway. Um. So, does that sound okay still, Wayne? I don't disagree, but I don't, I don't know, they already voted on it that way, so.
If I could just get a copy of the.
The vote?
Yeah, allocating because I would feel more comfortable because. You know, things at the town don't trickle down sometimes and I'd like to.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's actually in the, it was in the warrant, let me, um. And it has the total amount, like it added, um, with that line. Um, so I'll send that to you afterwards, Wayne, just to, like with the seventy-six thousand dollars they added, it wasn't just us, like they added into their. Different, you know, um. General. Um, general fund as well, okay.
We have to, do we have to vote on it then?
Yeah, yeah, we're just going to do, so I, I sent an email afterward, just con- conflair, uh, clarifying that we're just, so I. If everyone is okay with that still or under any other questions, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that we, um, allocate the additional. Seventy-six thousand dollars approved at special town meeting, um, in October twenty-twenty-four to cost center. Four thousand for plant operations and maintenance for F Y twenty-five, yeah, okay, yeah, for F Y twenty-five budget. All right, Mary seconds, any other discussion? Okay, Hillary?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha, yes, all right, Wayne, I will send over, um, the warrant that shows what was, um. Presented at town meeting and, um, so you have that in your pocket as well. Okay, thank you so much for that.
Uh, and then the money is available immediately since they voted on it.
Exactly, that's exactly, that's all we, that's why I wanted us to get it allocated so that we can, you know, spend it wherever we need, so they voted at town, it's in our operating. Exactly. That's exactly, that's all we, that's why I wanted us to get it allocated so that we can, you know, spend it wherever we need. So they voted at town. It's in our operating budget. Now we've allocated to maintenance. And so that's where the money is for, once, once you up or update that information, okay?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Alrighty, then now we're moving on to the charter amendment request for AMSA. I know, Brian, you had shared. A lot of information and I'll just kind of pivot to you to just kind of. Speak on this a little bit more.
Yeah, there's just, I think there's concern amongst several of the towns that have students attend AMSA. Hudson, Marlboro, Maynard. When you look at their statistics of what, who they accept. It's so we look at the state average, then we look at what major numbers are, and then we look at what AMSA numbers are. So without going through all the sheets that are in the the folder, just high level categories would be the percentage of E L students. For AMSA is significantly lower than it is in Maynard, which may in fact be lower than the state, just because the state includes big cities. Same, same numbers, if you will, in terms of a lower percentage exists for students with disabilities. For economically disadvantaged. So what does that really mean that the kids that we retain? Are the most expensive to educate and they're taking, if you will.
They're cherry picking.
So that's the concern. They're not, what they're asking for is not a huge number. I think it's thirty six students. They're at nine, nine something. But every student at this point matters. Back in the day, one or two students really didn't have such a significant impact. We. They, I think we have seventy four students attending charter schools or maybe seventy four attending AMSA. And it's about a million fi, a million and a half dollars.
Little bit, but not like I think we're gonna, it's a temporary, like I think they were. For the budget estimates, it looked like it went a little bit down, maybe like a hundred.
But I think the bigger concern is the, what Mary mentioned, that the type of student that they're accepting versus not accepting. And how that works.
It, but is it that they're accepting or because it? They mentioned something about that they do a lottery.
Yeah, I don't think it's that they're accepting. I think that they accept without knowing through the lottery. I think that historically AMSA has tried to counsel kids out that have special needs, but they got in trouble, so they know that they're not supposed to and they. Don't necessarily anymore. But that doesn't necessarily carry out. There's counseling kids out and then there's like truly welcoming.
I just look at the numbers, so I, I don't know behind the scenes how that happens. Just looking at the numbers, that's what I can report to you.
Like a child that isn't doing well in school probably thinks they're not cut out for math, advanced math and science school and then they don't apply. So I don't know that it's that they're not accepting so much as they're not. Encouraging and, but the outcome is the same in terms of the cost, like we have the more expensive kids.
So what are we gonna do about it? Wait, I just want to make sure Mauro, you got to finish your, your point.
Well, basically, that's what I was saying was that it's more, it's not that they're not accepting them. It's that those types of. Of students aren't going or aren't trying to go to AMSA. And so because they don't get in the lottery. Or put their name in the lottery, then they obviously aren't picked to go to AMSA. And so it's not. I think it's more not the fact that they aren't accepting those students. Is it's more that those students aren't trying to go there and so we end up. Not stuck, but like we, we end up having to make sure that we are. Doing the whole, all the children, whereas AMSA really only has. You know, a much smaller percentage of those types of students. That we, that they have to end up paying for. But. Who, who actually is making this determination, a yes or a no, on whether or not their amendment is gonna go through?
The Board of Education.
Okay, so are we able to send a letter to them and say absolutely not?
You can do whatever you want. Yeah, this is the, this is the public comment portion, which is why I brought it to your attention.
Brian, can, can you remind when the deadlines, that, that's where I, I kept, felt like I got lost on. When the public comments period was, and I thought there was something I read somewhere and it was a lot of documents.
I think it's December thirteenth.
December thirteenth.
But there was, was there also like a super, like a separate, like they were, they solicited the. School committee or the superintendents again to respond, which I thought was sep, I don't know if that was separate. So December thirteenth is what you, you said?
Yep.
Okay, so just as a. This is gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna have, I spoke with Jeff a little bit about this yesterday in our leadership meeting, so he's aware. And so I think there's gonna be appetite for other board feedback. On it, so maybe FinCom or the Select Board as well to weigh in. So I don't think we, we as a. As a school committee would have to go it on our own, I think. But I think, Brian, there are also other school committees, maybe Hudson.
Yeah, I can talk with Brian. Brian Regan, the superintendent of Hudson. We've played phone tag a little or email tag today. So I'll have a little more information from him next week.
Yeah, his, my, I saw your note, Natasha, and so I, I checked their, their minutes and his comment was the contrast is pretty stock. So they're pretty, as far as, you know, what, what's happening, so I think.
Mauro, I, I think there's a couple of things, so it's not maybe all or none, just to make sure I. So that, yes, they have the lottery. I think to Hillary's point. I think some, they have subtly counseled, maybe sometimes not so subtly counseled out. And I think also. When there's no, clearly no. Marketing towards like, you know, we, we teach differently that are like, like acid that alternatively, right? Is that we teach more hands on and, you know, which might. You know, be more. You know, suitable for certain, you know, certain type of learners. As AMSA does, does not do that. And there are, there is a particular formula that I, I haven't had a chance this week to look at, but talks about like there, there's a cap. As well that you have to hit. Or not, Maynard, the only time, I know at one point, Maynard, because our, our status was not great. We were exempt from the cap, so we were, more students were able to go to AMSA. We've been, it's like, I think it's like the, the top ten or the, or the lowest performing ten districts or something to that effect of depending on what your score is. We're, we're not in that category anymore. But I want to go back to make sure and see like what, how much we add these additional room, like how many kids, what, what does that cap look like for us? And I don't know if maybe part of the conversation should be if they're talking about amending their charter. Maybe we should look at their charter as a whole and maybe advocate for other parts of the charter to be. You know, considered for amending. That, you know, like I look at what. Whether it's the, how they get assessed or whatever that might be, you know, I don't know. I know not all charters are the same. So, you know, is there language in other charters for other charter schools that maybe. We might wanna, you know, see if we can have include, I don't know. I'm just kind of, you know, thinking out loud for some of the, the aspects and. Heather, I know that I sent you and Wayne just some information about, thank you for, for joining about that, those enrollment concerns. That we have. So Brian, do you have, or Heather, do you have some like date Maynard specific data about? What? And again, I don't want to not got to personalize it, but just on a high level, like what our numbers, what our numbers are, Maynard for like the high needs. And an E L like those population and then, and then what that comparative is.
Yeah, it's in the folder, but I can tell you.
Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm, maybe I missed that one, sorry.
That's all right. I mean, like English language learners, for example, the twenty twenty three data has Maynard at seven percent. And it has. For economically disadvantaged has Maynard at twenty seven point eight, the state average is forty two. And AMSA is sixteen.
Right.
And it's similar for students with disabilities, Maynard's at nineteen point one, the state's at nineteen point four, so we finally got a little bit below that. And AMSA's at six point eight. So you can see the numbers are not very close. I know what I put in there is a, it didn't copy well.
No, 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 I, I was trying to look at, I think it was the one I, yeah, yeah. See, this is where Mary, she has like the notebook, she prints everything. So in thinking a, a about that and, you know, I don't know if there's a strategy to even think like, hey, if we want to tie it like to numbers, like for reimbursement or ask about that, you know, like if we're having to support more high needs. And E L students and they don't, you know, I, maybe that's something, Mary, we could talk to Jamie and, and Kate on, you know, like, why isn't that a factor in our. Charter school reimbursement, you know. Because, you know. Our net school spending will continue to be higher if that's the case for per student, so.
Yeah, and just, it's so, it sounds like, so Hudson obviously is on this, we're gonna be on this. How about Clinton and Marlboro? I mean, if we could get all four of us collectively. I don't know, Kevin, don't know about Clinton.
I think three of four, I think one wasn't, they didn't have the appetite right now.
Okay.
And I forget if it was Marlboro or Clinton, so I don't want to.
Yeah, I think Marlboro. Tapped, they hit a cap recently, just because, and so they, I think are kind of like, they won't, it wouldn't impact them this.
Oh, so it's gonna impact the other three of us then, yeah.
Wasn't allowed to send anybody new.
Yeah, it's, it changes period, like every year, depends on like their enrollment and some other, they, they cap out pretty. They hit that cap that the state has pretty, pretty regularly. Because also their students, because they're in Marlboro and AMSA is in Marlboro, like they don't have to pay transportation for their students. They follow into like a different set of rules, so that. It is more appealing for Maynard, I mean Marlboro students to. To go there, so.
Yes, I guess my concern then is that thirty six divided by three communities, we could be looking at additional twelve students. Yeah, we can't do that. We can't do that. So anyway, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and that's about like fifteen thousand a student.
Right.
Uh, on top of what we're paying extra here for this, the students, so. So next steps, Mary.
I'd like to hear what Heather was gonna say.
Oh, sorry.
No, it was kind of said already. I was just gonna say that when I was reading the article that was shared, it looked like Marlboro was capped out at fifty. And so I think the big concern was is how it was gonna impact the other three towns, which really was what was being said while my hand was raised, so I'm like, oh, I don't have to repeat myself.
We're all thinking the same thing, yeah.
We were.
So thinking about next steps, Brian, you'll circle back to the superintendent and see.
Yep, I'll say by midweek next week or in my memo, I should have more information next week for you after talking with Heather and talking with other superintendents. Yep.
Okay, and then. We're gonna, Mary, I did, I did ask Jeff to put it on our budget subcommittee meeting on the twenty third on that. So we'll maybe have an opportunity there to share more information. And so the next school committee meeting on the twenty fourth, maybe we should plan on. Just having it on the agenda again, just talk about strategy and by then we maybe can reach out to Jamie and Kate and. Between that and the, the asset bet. Thing, I think that's a lot. Maybe we can see about them coming to one of our meetings.
Yep, absolutely.
In the near future as well, once we kind of raise some concerns, so.
Are we actually gonna have to vote on something on this?
If we want to provide like a sign on to a letter, you know, advocating, yes, we would want to. I think it's more about. You know, how, how are we doing that with, with other groups and, and the timeline looks like we have until early December, it sounds like to, to get. To get all that done.
Okay.
So strategizing, so I guess I'll just keep it on the agenda until. Mary?
If I could, so knowing how busy Kate and Jamie are in December thirteenth is right around the corner, actually. Should we ask them for maybe the not, the next meeting, but maybe the, the maybe two meetings away to come? And we'd have enough time to plan between now and then?
Yeah, so you're thinking like in November.
If we want them to help at all, I think sooner versus later.
Yeah, yeah, let me put that as a takeaway. Then just to.
Cause I can reach out to them tomorrow.
Can you do that and just CC me? You know, maybe just leave it, maybe look at our schedule and see what dates and just propose, like not the next meeting, but maybe after, say. See what would work for them. And then maybe we can just. Meet a little bit, give them a, you know, preliminary offline, just a couple of things so that they can have information to share with us. Prepared. When they meet. Great, Mary, thank you. Anything else on this at this moment? Okay, so we'll keep it on our agenda until. Uh, for discussion then. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, the forty B project school recommendation. Mary, thank you very much. I know that you did a lot of work putting something together. For us in the folder. One thing I just wanted to say, and I started adding a note, but then I, I don't know if it actually made any sense without context. The Jeff. And the select board, I guess they want to make sure that the recommendations that we're providing aren't saying that we, you know, we don't want growth or that we're opposed to growth at all. It is more of the accelerated pace of growth that this particular development would impact the school. Without, you know, like. And we did, we did, you know, Brian and I, when we spoke with him, we did convey that, you know. Like adding more than two, like two students in a grade, you know. We do have school choice open, but beyond that, it can get really tight because then you're talking about twenty. You know, twenty plus kids in a classroom. So I just wanted to kind of convey that part is that the impact on transportation, staff resources. But not saying we would be opposed to growth, because that's gonna happen anyway. It's just maybe the impact of significant growth at once. And knowing that we can't fund right now, we're already short. So I don't know, Mary, if you want to speak to.
Yeah, so do you just want me to add something along those lines that we're not opposed? Cause yeah, even in my personal one, I, I wrote not opposed to, you know, future growth. So. Do we want to just add something like that?
I was thinking adding something about like the rate of growth is the, really the larger concern of, you know, with this project, because it's so large. And that is. And not being able to respond with staffing needs. Budgetary concerns, all of that, but I think it's more the rate of growth, that would be.
All right, let me, let me do some adjusting and then I'll send it off to you guys for your thoughts.
But I want to make sure that everyone else, so looking at the margins. Mauro, looks like you had some stuff about how many kids currently enrolled.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the, you know, the comparative of how many apartments Halsted has compared to how many apartments this will have. Is this, does this one have more forty B, which means maybe more children? That, that kind of stuff and whether or not we could potentially try and figure out. How many students we would actually be getting. And, you know, whether or not that would help us. You know. By comparing, comparing in this. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so when I went to meet with Halsted to get their numbers, to get, you know, the different parameters of the units and that, they were pretty protective about the information, understandably, so. Not sure if we're gonna get anything more. Plus, it's a, it's a little. You know, transient with, with them, you know, as far as people moving in and moving out.
Right, right.
Question, Brian, you and Colleen, I know that the estimates that we get. For enrollment trends that we have forecasting are not really aligned with what we were seeing. Can we have them, like, ask them what data that you're using and like. Re, like, give them like, look, this is what, we're, we're seeing this, like, why are you guys off? Like, what are they using? Because clearly there's like. I don't know, it's unreliable data and I would love to have data from them that is more reflective of what's actually. but it seems like every year they're off.
So when I reach out to them this year, I can mention that.
Okay.
I don't know what formula, they have a set formula they, they use, I don't know.
Yeah, cause Jeff asked that in the select board, and we're gonna get asked that question, you know, as well, it's about our enrollment trends, but it's hard because we do have it, but I don't want to provide it, because what we show as actuals is totally different than what we're, they're projecting. So it feels like something's off in their formula.
We had the same problem with the high school.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I don't know, just, and I know some of its COVID impact, but I think it's been, it's a lot of years that they're off.
We're gaining back from COVID though.
Right, and they show us losing, uh, over the years, like, they're completely, they don't even show growth at all, they show losing and we're showing growth. So it's like total different direction, which I am wondering, you know, and which I, I'm grateful that we're seeing different, but it's hard to rely on their data for any type of actual use.
Yeah, we can reach out to them and see what they use, and if they can adjust, or if they can't, what they're using that gets them what they're getting.
Yeah, um, yeah, that would be helpful to start off, like, what, what are they, how are they doing that? Okay, great. And then, so are we comfortable approving what, like, I mean, I really honestly would find, be fine approving what we have, and then giving Mary the authority to adjust.
Or I'd rather, I'd rather just send it to you guys, can I just, yeah.
We, we need to send it to them tomorrow.
That's right, okay.
So that's why, you know, um, I, I think you have, I'm looking at what you put together, you have, I think you have a good grasp on, on what needs to happen. But I don't, I don't think we have a lot of time for a lot of back and forth, unfortunately, so that's my, that was my thought process is.
And so I should send this directly to the select board then, if, um.
Yeah, I, I have a, yeah, I'll give you the emails, Jeff, uh, Greg, I think had provided, so I'll, I'll, I'll send that you, um, cause we would want to send it to, Greg's on vacation this week, but, um, he had, um, Bill Nemser, and there was somebody else, um, as well, who's consolidating all the stuff, for this luck board, and this luck board will be, um.
Okay.
Yeah, putting their files, so I'll send that to you, um, tonight, so you can have that, and then tomorrow, you can maybe send it, and then CC, um, great. Um, so is everyone, um, have any questions on what was put together? And what Mary's, any other thoughts to include or not include? Alexis, anything for you?
Um, I was just wondering if there was any more data that we could put in here, not just about Green Meadow, because it's really, it's heavily skewed towards Green Meadow, which I completely understand, since we're building a brand new building, um, and using, you know, data, um, as to what we need for that new building, but any type of influx would also impact Fowler and the high school as well. And so I'm wondering if we just need to add something about where we are enrollment-wise with those schools, and the impact that it could also potentially have. I mean, I know there's a bullet in there about sizable increase in students in any grade level. Will result in, you know, additional classes, staffing, that whole thing. However, you get very specific with, um, kindergarten through third grade, and I'm wondering if there are any specifics.
Maybe, um, I wonder, we, we, we can look at, um, just thinking out loud, what we approved for school choice. Like, cause that's kind of looking at that, like, what is available for the class each year, like, how many students we could accommodate for each grade. And so, Mary, I don't know if that would be, just say generally, this is the amount, like, you know, we are able to, without increasing staff. Right? These, you know, FY twenty-five, we were able, we're able to add this much, which is in line, proportionally, what we're usually average able to do. Beyond that, it would like trigger additional step, you know, additional staff. Well, uh, maybe, I don't know if that might be a good reference data, because we approve that every year.
But if there is year, um, grade to grade to grade, so I'm not gonna like.
Right, you know, I don't think you need to put up, I think generally, like, maybe, yeah, you can maybe look at what we did for this year, right? And just say this year for FY twenty-five, this is what we've, you know, based on data, this is what we felt we could accept without having to increase, but anything beyond that would require the hiring of additional staff and supports.
And I can even do it by school, cause I know it varies, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that has high school as well, in there as well, so, um. And the only other thing, uh, anything else, Alexis?
No, that was really the only thing.
You think it'd be okay with that? Just looking at that as a data reference, okay. Yeah, I know that there's a lot of work that goes into that with the leadership team to figure that out, so I figured that maybe, it's better than our.
Well, thank you, Colleen.
Yeah.
She just sent it. Saves me from that damn Google.
Google Drive?
Take me three hours to find it.
Uh, Morrow, anything for you on?
No, I, I don't have anything more, and I'm perfectly fine with, you know, approving and having Mary make any changes to send it along.
Uh, Hillary, anything?
Um, I'm good, um, what Mary has.
Okay.
And any changes?
Okay, um. And, yeah, and then the only thing was, yeah, um, Mary, the, the transportation piece, I know you caught that in that, that last bullet.
Right.
Yeah, I think it would be, yeah, adding one or more buses. Would, is, would be minimally required, because it would be, I think that's what happens right now currently at like Dear, um, Dear Ron. Like, they have, they almost have to have a dedicated for the amount of kids that they have there, so.
I mean, there are enough problems right now with the buses and too many students.
Yeah, so, um, do we have, um, Colleen, a number, like, estimate of what, one?
I, I can get that to Mary tomorrow.
Okay.
Because we, we would need a fifth bus.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like, just an estimate, like, as of FY twenty-five, adding one bus, you know, for two runs, it may, might be what that cost would be. So that would be an increase as well. Great, and I think that's it, so Mary, I, I have, that's, I think you've captured everything well, um, so, if everyone's okay.
Everybody the final, but yeah, but I will.
I'll just go ahead and, um, yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the, um, proposed, recommendation provided by Mary for the forty B project with edits and authorize Mary to amend, as suggested on behalf of the school committee.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, roll call, Mary?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Natasha, yes, all right. Mary, wonderful, thank you, I'll get you those emails, and, um, and then you'll be good.
Yeah.
You can send that tomorrow, whenever you, whenever you have a chance. All right, now, oh, is this the chair report, I just actually closed my agenda, damn. Yes, here we go, okay, uh, chair report, the, we talked enough about special town meeting. Question about meeting, our meetings, are we looking to keep them remote? Or does anyone have appetite to go back hybrid? I just wanted to kind of put it out there, I've received questions from some folks, and I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, I think the, the elements of illness kind of have passed, but I don't think that's been the only reason why we've done it, I just want to make sure if there are any concerns with, um, considering hybrid at some point in the near future, for our meetings, and then, you know, work out, we need to make sure we work with Brian and Colleen to give them enough time for planning, and for when we would wanna start that as well, but I just wanted to throw it out there because it was asked. Mary, any, any particular thoughts?
I'm happy, happy to do either.
Okay, all right, and I know that one of the issues was, we had the technology with hearing people when we were, you know, remote, when we were in person. We probably won't have the fan issue anymore, because it's a little bit on the cooler side. So, um, so it's just more about, you know, is everything, all the other set up? We can, you know, get work and, and make sure we have enough lead time, um, and that's if we folks are feeling, you know, going back to a hybrid would be a good approach, um, Morrow?
I'd like to go back to hybrid.
Okay, um, Hillary?
Um, I, there's things I really like about being remote only, um, and there's also some things I like about being in person, um.
Okay.
Oh, I'm kind of open.
Okay, um, did I miss anybody? Alex, did I say you?
No.
Sorry, I feel like I missed like this, my screen, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm, I'm good either way, um, I think if we're gonna show up for special town meeting in person, with everybody else, I don't see why we don't. And if it's a hybrid option, and we need to not be there in person, then we as school committee members have that as an option as well.
And just for awareness sake, obviously, right now, we are only approved until, uh, March twenty twenty-five anyway. I mean, I'm sure it'll come down to the wire before they figure out what to do next. So, um, I'll, um, Brian, you know, you and Colleen, I'll talk with you guys online, when we can figure like what the best way to do that, and start, you know, doing a hybrid, when we can, you know, comfortably feel reasonably to get all that done, and what, the missed meeting to start doing that. Um, Colleen?
Just, just so you know, the first meeting in November, I am on the Cape, and I don't know what, um, technology wise, what you guys want to do, because I will not be here in person. And I'm not sure what my internet capability will be.
And, and since we can't clone you, um, I think that will be an important consideration, so.
But just that meeting.
Okay, so that's good to know, we'll, um, we'll work again offline a little bit more, but, uh, I think there's the idea that some people feel like in person, we, we can collaborate a little bit more, um, when we have. But I think, you know, recognizing there is a flexibility, if we need, any of us need to be remote, for whatever reason, we're all, you know, parents at some level, um, or we have things going on, yeah, we have that option as well, so. All right, more to come on that, and then, uh, let's see what other notes I had. I think that was really, it's, oh, October sixteenth next week, I just wanted to make sure, does that Wednesday, Mary, I, I was, does that work okay with you, six thirty?
Six thirty works great, yep.
Okay, Alexis?
Yep, that works.
Okay, Morrow, yep, you were good?
Yes.
Okay, um, did I lose? Where'd Hillary go? Did I lose Hillary?
Oh, we did lose Hillary.
Oh, we did lose her.
Yeah.
Man, I can't get an answer from Hillary. Okay, so, um, Colleen, I'm gonna assume Hillary is a yes, and I'm gonna send an agenda over for our workshop for next Wednesday, the sixteenth, cause I know I have to do it. Cause the town, town closes, um, at eleven, and Monday's a holiday, so, um. So I'm gonna send that over to you, if you could block, um. We're gonna do that in person, so I think the conference room, uh, for our, uh, school community workshop, and we'll be having conversation about goals, um, so Brian, we will have on our next school committee meeting, um, your goals, and be ready to have some, um, discussions about that and approving, sound good?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I will make sure that Hillary hears this, cause I didn't realize she we lost her, um, all right, and that's, um, really just thank you everyone for your work for the special town meeting. I know there's a lot of things behind this scene and preparing, um, for that meeting, and we looking forward to, moving forward with the work for budget, there is some budget, Terry, um, there's a couple of budget updates that I wanted to just share. So, um, we have, and I don't know if everyone's aware of this, and I wish Hillary's on, because I don't know if she is, but, so we have, um, I think Brian and Wayne correct, we have one HVAC that is gonna be, um, repair, is it this weekend? That will have one, the Fowler one, which is yay, um, there, there is another HVAC that, that's that second one that we, we're gonna repair, but now it has to be replaced, um, and so that seventy-six thousand will be put towards that. The remaining nexus from what was approved that last, like, last year's special time meeting, will be, you know, leftover that was gonna be put for repairs, actually gonna be put towards it. And then we discussed at our school, school budget subcommittee, um, the difference, um, Wayne and Mary, was it like, was it sixty thousand? Is that right? And so we're going to, um, you know, we've absorbed thirty thousand of that, and then we're going to, um, seek the other thirty thousand through a request to FinCom, through their, um, reserve fund transfer, so just for everyone's awareness, that's the, the plan. Oh, Hillary said she had to go, so, um, I will update her later on that. So that's the plan, I will work on putting, um, the required information together. I think Brian, you and Wayne were working on getting, uh, an estimate from Train on that, secondary unit, because that's what we're gonna need to, to show, part of our ask, and when we have that together, then we can, as a school committee, we can vote on that request, and then I can go to FinCom, um, we need to secure the funds before we can actually order it, so that's, the next step to get that done, so that's, that update. There is some updates, I'll email everyone separately, but in December, just trying to, the budget calendar, usually that's that, that end of November, so December, things might remove a little bit, so I'm gonna, I'll send an email around, just to confirm like what, we may have some date changes for school committee meetings, um, there, and, um, and again, that's just to accommodate, um, that one, we, we get to hear everybody, like, the schools, that they can come and have time to present to us. And two, that we get to hear the presentation, give feedback, give that back to Wayne and, and Brian, and then at a subsequent meeting vote on the ask, which has to be done before the end of December, before we all leave, um, so Greg can have that number, cause he'll be waiting, anxiously to get, we're always the last, but we're, hey, it's in line with, with the charter requires, so. Any questions on that, besides the dates, I don't have the dates right now, but I'll send that in the email, about what those proposed dates are, that we'll be looking to update the, our school committee, um, calendar for that, that time. Anything else? Mary might think, forgetting.
So the twelfth of December, we actually have a meeting, that was the first one, then we were projecting, um, the following week, December nineteenth, just for people to think about.
The ninth, was it the ninth, was it the ninth, Tuesday?
No, it's a, it's another Thursday.
Why did I think there was a Tuesday for some reason?
Okay, I had it done as that Thursday, but. Anyway, so just, yeah, you can just send it out, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, that sounds good, but yeah, so just everyone to think about that, um. It's essentially just moving them, adding, animating, um, and I think maybe moving another one. Just because also people go on holidays, so we wanted to, you know, doing it too late, by the twenty, whatever that was, was seemed a little bit, well, too late. So, all right, and I think that's all that I had, Brian, we haven't heard anything from, just from, I'm thinking about personnel, but like from the, the, the union about negotiation, or they haven't, nothing yet, okay. All right, so, um, all right, so then we'll, we're still waiting for that. And then, um, November twelfth is the quad board meeting that is scheduled for everybody, so, it'll be, it looks like, I think, six thirty, and it will be a hybrid meeting. So I think most people, Mary, I, I did see that you, you know, you have to scoot out a bit early, so you'll be joining online. And I'll, again, circle back with Hillary, just to check her availability, Brian and, and Wayne. You know, I, I don't know, I'm guessing this will be heavy bleacher budget talk, um, priorities. So, um, if you're available, please, that'd be great. And we can, you know, plan a little bit more about what, what we, our conversation, but we, we may want to also, at some, at that point, I don't know if we're gonna be ready to have, like, what our, what our number will be of that nexus of what we'll be looking for. We probably should be prepared to at least give a high level, and, and that would be without school committee actually having a presentation on it, so I think that's what we would want to frame it as. It will be somewhere in this, still in progress, you know, rough estimate. without school committee actually having a presentation on it, so I think that's what we would want to frame it as, it will be somewhere in this, still in progress, you know, rough estimate. But, you know, looking at a ballpark of what that short, that shortage will be looking like for an override, so. Okay, um, Mary, any updates from you?
Just thank you to Wayne and everybody that put together the, the fourth quarter for the financial report.
Yeah.
Um, did it, and another amazing, amazing job, so just thank you, thank you for that, and I just had a question about it, um, Wayne, and I guess Brian too, as far as with all of the ongoing grants, you know, me with always thinking, okay, get the people out of it, and so if we change personnel on that, can we put a schedule of what grant, because there are certain grants that we apply for every single year, like I'm thinking the, the MyCap one that Denise Hatch, you know, started at the middle school and that, just so that irrespective of the people that are in position to have, you know, this is the grant that we apply for every year, this is when we usually apply for it, and this is the person that is, you know, responsible for it, could we put some, or do we have something like that?
We have that.
We already do, like Charles probably has it, right, or just, yeah, so it's, it's not really.
Pretty well, between Charles and Wayne, it's pretty well organized between the entitlement grants and the grants that we apply for and Heather, I mean, she's part of, you know, the special grants and whatnot, so we could kind of have that laid out, we meet monthly to go over it, so that we track it pretty tightly.
Perfect, so we're not gonna lose any opportunity, because we've worked really to, to really apply for everything, so um, so that's, that's great, thank you. And then um, Saturday at uh, Maynard Fest, it came up again about, and I know I've mentioned this a couple of times, and I think Chuck was going to follow up with the middle school also, and Keith isn't here anymore, but the Bridges program that we used to have at the Fowler, I spoke to two incredibly amazing people that grew up in Maynard, that are probably in their eighties, and they had so much to offer, and I can only imagine, you know, how great it would be to get them in front of our kids and, um, and that kind of thing, so I I just want to put the push out again to see if we can put that program together. I think it was the fifth grade that did it when we did it before COVID, and it meant the, it meant a teacher kind of taking it on, if I remember correctly, but um, it just, you know, just talking to these people again, it just really re- um, reiterated that um, how great a program it was, and how much the kids learned, and how much, you know, the seniors enjoyed doing it, so.
Mary, I know a teacher who could take it on.
Oh, yeah, there you go, okay, that would be amazing, I just want somebody to take it on, because it was so great. And then the other piece, and it talks about buses again, we were, we had talked about talking in the fall about doing an RFP in January for the late bus. We were gonna, because we had already gotten into the negotiations with DBUS for the, the regular contract, but we talked about doing that, so I want us to um, to revisit that, and that was it.
But didn't we say we were gonna do a survey? For the late bus?
Were we gonna, okay, so even that.
I do remember a survey, like of like what the needs were, um, where people felt the most need and time and all that.
Yeah.
With days, days.
Don't want that to go by the wayside unless not, because we keep talking about that late bus also. Thanks.
Right, Mauro?
I don't really have anything, I, I did have just a, just a comment about the vote on Monday, um, about the bleachers, and just wondering, and this is just kind of putting it out there, um, wondering what the people that didn't vote for the bleachers and are kind of still expecting us to maybe keep on providing, um, you know, some sort of bleachers, even though they're temporary, where they think that that money is coming from. And now that, you know, we have no, we have no funding for any of that, what, what did, what did they expect us to do? So, um, probably nobody's gonna even read the, you know, see this, but that's, you know.
But no, I mean, I think we were clear, like in the, in the warrant article, like, there's no funding.
Right.
You know, and I don't know what people retain, like, you know.
Well, but considering that nobody, hardly anybody, at least some of the people that got up and spoke, didn't read all the things that we put in there, the sponsor comments, because they were asking questions that the in- information was right in there. So, um, it's just, you know, really disappointing, so.
It might be worthwhile, um, just thinking that we have you know, after the quad board meeting, maybe we have like a forum, you know, once we get a plan about what's happening with the bleachers now, but that we just have a public forum about like, you know, conversation, questions, and maybe a Q and A that we can talk about, like what people, I mean, people have to, have to engage, there is a level of effort. People have to want to actually join or come to vote, I mean, like this and only so much we can do. You know, we provide forums, we we've talked about it at our school committee meetings, a- almost every meeting, there's a, a bleacher update that we've, we've gone over, so it's not like happening, you know, quietly. But aside from making it happen, people, if they want, that they have a view on it, they need to really engage at some level. That's my thoughts on it, but I, maybe we, we'd say like, hey, we can do like a, a, a public forum, like a remote, and people can log in, I don't know. Q and A, ask your questions, send your questions, we'll be here to answer, you know, I don't know.
So that was one, um, the other thing was, um, just a reminder that if anybody could or everyone just could um, email me about the policies that they're interested in us um, going over so that Hillary and I can start working on those. And that's all I've got, thank you.
Alexis, today?
I think we've talked about everything.
Okay.
So I'm not gonna add on tonight.
Okay, all right. Wayne and Brian, just for our next budget subcommittee meeting, um, just because I was, I was asked recently by a parent about um, how we are maybe pivoting to using school bucks for as a means to collect for other payments now, like field trips and stuff, I just want to make sure that, and now that we have gone through like one year, and we have certain things, is, do we have opportunities to expand it for more efficiencies, because I know that we're still collecting check and cash for a lot of different stuff, and so I just wanted to maybe have a conversation about like what that, what do we look at for the next vision of, can, you know, relying on the, the use um, for other areas, like could have, like for field trips, I know like, um, one of the things, like nature's classroom, you know, that's one that, there's a lot of cash and check back and forth, I think there's like class dues that happen at the high school, you know, so just wanted to kind of think about that, how we're, you know.
Yeah, we can look into that and see what the options are.
Doesn't school bucks charge a fee?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that, for me, I hate fees. So, like, I would much rather write out a check, so I don't have to pay a fee to use that.
I hear you on that, but also the risk of having cash transactions, I mean, the loss of, you know, things get missing, I mean, you're losing you know, I think, I think it's like, kind of almost a wash in some way, you know, you have kids who things in their pocket, parents who don't want to send their middle school with three hundred bucks in cash, you know, or, or, you know, maybe they don't use checks at home anymore. So I just, you know, I don't know the, but there's a one-way answer, I know that it is more broadly used for a lot of other things, and like club sign-ins and and whatnot, and I, I don't know, um, maybe understanding what that fee is, and if it's worth, you know, it's, is that an acceptable risk or acceptable considering the efficiency that we might gain, I get, you can post invoices to, you know, people's accounts, and then they just pay it, you know, for, for stuff, so, anyway, just a conversation for um, to explore, since it's
That there are a number of people that feel like Mauro do, so we do, some of our cash and checks that we get are people that say, I can come in and walk in and not pay a fee. They, they, they have voiced that. So that's part of it, I don't, percentage wise, what's the reason behind that? Or I, I can't tell you, you know, it's fifty percent, forty percent, but um, there are a number of people that have shared that with us, that they don't want to do that. Uh, that's not to say we can't look into it, I'm just saying that, that exists.
Oh, you, you just got muted, I don't know, um, yeah, no, and I, I think not eliminating that for people who that is the preferred method. I think right now it's only, in some instances, only cash or check, and then people who would rather just pay online or whatever, maybe they're a single parent, and they can't make it to the, before the school closes all the time, and they don't want to send cash, might be um, a card, so I think it's more the flexibility of the option, that we're just right now, in some cases, only accepting cash or check for some of these events, and um, that's not, doesn't work for everyone, so I think if we would want to that would still be available potentially, but how do we, for people, we can you know, do otherwise, open it up.
But Natasha, the one thing that I would want, which I, I would assume it's possible, but I don't know, in being able to send cash or a check, and I know this from, you know, all the field trips that I send money in for, that there's the option of helping to pay for a child who cannot afford it, um, and sending additional money as a part of that, so you fill it out on the form, I wouldn't want to lose that as a part of going to some online payment up as an option for people who, you know, want that quick, it'll take me two minutes to make the payment, I don't want to lose that as an option for those families. Because I think it's important that they have the option to donate additional money to help other students within the community.
No, that's a, that's a good point, so I, I, I think that's a important consideration as well, so I, yeah, I don't know the answer to it, I just wanted to kind of put it out there, because I've heard feedback on both sides, and I don't know what is being explored uh, or not, um, with that, so more to come, sounds like, anyway. All right, anything else before we move on to accept, oh, um, the warrants, and I saw Colleen, you had sent the email about the warrants for tonight. So, without objection, I will move that we accept the approved warrant twenty five zero one seven, zero one eight, zero one nine, zero two zero, and zero two one. All right, they are accepted, and I think that's it, right, we don't have any minutes, I did say minutes, okay. Thank you all, uh, I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mary?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Natasha, yes, Carol, good night, thank you for hanging on.
Thank you all.
Chuck, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Heather, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.